I call this meeting of the Riverside City Council to order for Thursday, June 21st, work session. First thing we'll have is the roll call.
Mr. Campbell. Mr. Currie.
For who?
Mr. Green.
Here.
Mr. Bonecamp.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Ford. Here. We did get an email from Ms. Campbell. She's going to be, she's running late. Hopefully she'll be here by the time for the regular meetings. That email came into the clerk. So, is there a motion to excuse?
So moved.
Second.
Then moved by Deputy Mayor Danning, second by Mr. Shaw. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. Motions carry. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I make the motion, approve the agenda after Senate. Second.
Then moved by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. Motions carry. Have we done the work session items? Before I go to work session items, if someone does want to talk about the, any of the work session items, I ask them, please fill out a sheet of paper so that when we're talking about that, we can have you have a discussion with us if that's your wish. First thing on is the work session item is a discussion of Red Flex camera. Ms. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For the request of council, the police department has provided crash data reports for all of you for the years 2009 through 2011. It's a complete list of all the crashes, including locations and reasons for the crashes. Chief Fries and I are available to answer any questions that you may have regarding the state.
Thank you, Ms. Manager. Is any discussion on the Red Flex? Someone want to start the discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I was the one earlier, you know, that brought up the whole idea about, you know, having that flex and that would reduce, you know, severe accidents in our intersections here in the city. After reviewing all of this data, thank you Chief for, you know, putting it all together, I don't think we need it. It's not worth our time having it, you know, implemented into our city. So, at this point in time now, I'm not for moving forward with it.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Any other discussion on the item? Well, I too, I want to say how great, you know, how the information, I know that was a lot of information and a lot of work, Chief, so I'll thank city whoever did this for us. And I agree to a certain extent with you because, you know, most of them were rear ender accidents which weren't going to be helped by having the camera.
Right.
But the others, the only thing that got me going was the other cities all said that they reduced their accidents by a lot, but then we don't know what their numbers were.
Right.
Yes, Mr. Danning.
But if you look at our numbers, our numbers fluctuate from what Red Flex told us, it would lower it by 33 percent. But if you look at our numbers, our numbers can fluctuate by 33 percent any year. Okay? So, how are the, what are they, what are they engaging in against?
Okay?
And are they just using safety as a excuse for revenue? And that is my honest belief that they're using safety as an excuse to increase the revenue of those cities. Okay? Now, if we were able to, but if we were able to do our, what was the tickets that we were going to give?
Administrative.
Administrative tickets, okay? And our police officers were going to do it and we're going to be able to do that, but the court system told us we're not allowed to do that. So, you know, and that was, and we were being upfront, that was going to be revenue, all right? But for us to put these in, in the name of safety when it's actually revenue, I was never for that. Now, if we're going to go out and say it's for revenue and we're gonna, most of them, if we can say that most of the funding is going to come from non-residents because we have so many people going through our city, I'm just saying, if we're gonna do it and we're gonna do it that way, let's be honest about it, let's not take the same route as other folks saying it's safety when it's really not.
Well, the only reason I said safety though is because if you read the emails from the other states, it was, it is a safety for them. It's all in how you interpret the numbers. Mr. Bonecamp.
Yeah, that's the one thing that I was summarily unimpressed by was any real analysis of the data that Red Flex, I see even the study from the Texas summary and the study that we got. I didn't see a statistic anyplace in there stating a significance level. But I'm going to use our numbers as an example of noise and data. Mr. Danning stated, in '09, we had 105 accidents in those four or five intersections. In '10, we had 107, and it dropped in '11. So, we had a 20 percent drop for no reason. And that could be due just to noise, just to habit behavior, that could be due to a recession. I mean, all these studies, the studies that I saw from Red Flex, Red Flex used, didn't try to pull out the effects of the recession and everything else, traffic analysis. Those are all credible things in terms of why accidents occur. So, I'm pleased that we're not going to move forward with this. So, that's all I can say.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Hi, Danning. Just a quick question. On this, on the study, you have listed your, or it's listed traffic control device as being the cause of the accident, and then the definition of that is failure to yield the right of way. Wouldn't that be like the driver error? As opposed to a traffic?
See, now, I took that as running a red light. Am I right?
No, failure to yield right of way would be if you were at a stop sign and you begin to proceed through the intersection and opposing traffic is not required to stop and you pull out at an intersection and they hit you, you failed to yield right of way on incoming traffic. Running a red light would be the same thing, you failed to yield right of way, but that's defined differently in the traffic code as far as disregarding the traffic control device. So, but failure to yield right of way is even in an open intersection, if somebody's coming from your right, they have the right of way and you have to yield to them, if you failed to do so, it can be an accident caused in their home, so those are typical right of way violations.
I see. I understand that. I think, well, first let me clear, clarify what Councilman Danning was saying about it being for revenue. The city of Riverside Police Department and council, we never considered this to be a revenue source, but it was just looking at it as a safety issue. And I, and I think the red light camera folks, I think they packaged the red light camera sales pitch around safety, but in the long run, it is about revenue, I would say, because the red light camera people are making the bulk of the money. The city would be receiving some of the money. But I think it's packaged as safety, and possibly in some instances, it is safety for certain intersections and so forth. But I think overall, I think it is a revenue generating opportunity for the red light camera people and very little towards the city and any city employees. Just my thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Bonecamp.
I disagree with your statement that this was never talked about in terms of revenue. That's how the conversation started about a year and a half ago.
I thought we talked about it being for safety.
Well, we did, but the conversations that I had with staff, specifically what I were...
About the council itself.
Of course you're going to use the code word, safety.
I think, I'll be perfectly honest with you, I really moved forward with it on safety. I mean, that's the only reason that I wanted to move forward with it, so I don't want you to put words in everybody's mouth. Okay? I say honestly, I tried really hard to think of this as safety.
I'm not trying to put words in our minds. I'm trying to make sure that, that we're not tying into and buying into the other city's code words, taking Mr. Bonecamp's words, and selling it that way when, I mean, Dayton has already said, you know, they're making a million dollars a year off of the lights. And so, you know, they're not going to take them out, in fact, they're adding more and they're putting them closer and closer to our borders, you know? And that's frustrating to me. And I'm waiting for the day when the courts swing the other direction and force them to, force them to take them out.
Well, and Red Flex as a company, how they package and market their material is one thing, but again, from the emails we've seen from the other cities and the fact that they are doing business all across the United States in a way, big way, they must be an honorable company, whether they're doing honorable work or not, but I think they're an honorable company, I think they're doing what they do, and I think they do a good job.
They're filling a niche market, okay? And I don't, I have nothing against them filling that niche market, but it's our decision whether we want to, whether we want to put that, put our citizens in that situation or not. And I would not support putting our citizens in that situation.
One last question. The failure, traffic control device doesn't mean they just ran a red light, that's what you told me? Or is it part of running a red light? It could be.
No. Disregard of the traffic control device is a separate charge, failure to yield right of way is typically at open intersections and stop signs.
And we didn't see how many of those there.
Well, people turn right on reds and then get hit and they fail to yield right of way on coming traffic and pulling out of parking lots and that sort of thing. So, there's a, there's a number of different actions that meet that criteria for that particular charge, but running a red light is a specific term to itself.
And a lot of it's weather, there's weather and those kind of things, so, you know, I can see where the, the crashes is.
We were unimpressed with the studies that we saw from Red Flex regarding the violations. So, we were, we were unimpressed with the violations that we saw. We didn't think that necessitated a need for total enforcement, so.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, if I remember correctly, Red Flex was pushing more for speed control than, than intersections, red light control. Is that, is that a true statement?
No, actually, they wanted both.
Oh, okay.
But, again, we simply looked at Red Flex as a vendor, we weren't looking at the sales information that they were providing us to. I mean, we chose them as a vendor because they're a giant in the industry and out of the ones that we vetted, they were probably the best one to go with. But, other than, typically don't rely on the information you get out of a company who's marketing a product. So, I did look at their studies because they came out and ran the speed studies and the violation studies, which is nice because it saves us the time and the expense of doing it. But, once I looked at the numbers and went through what they really meant, I was really kind of unimpressed with the violations that we were seeing. And the one high one that we saw is, you know, it's a bit skewed, you're coming down a hill and it's, there's two signals on top of each other and it's the transition area from 45 to 35, so, I mean, it was really unremarkable in the information that we looked at.
Mr. Bonecamp.
You're talking about airway road.
Correct.
Why, why do we not have a sign that says speed reduced ahead?
Well, the, the speed signs that we have in place are properly spaced. If you look at the laws, laws with respect to the speed transition areas, the speed limit really goes into effect once that sign is within your visibility. So, all the people should be slowing down, they typically don't slow down until they actually hit the sign or will be on it. Sometimes they just don't slow down at all.
So, you're suggesting that these signs that warn of speed limit changes?
Speed reduction ahead.
Are ineffective or not required? I heard that.
It's, well, my experiences, they've not, they're not terribly effective, especially when you go from 45 to 35 immediately back to 45 once you clear the intersection, you know, and you're coming down a hill and then...
You take that hill and airways...
It's about the...
I mean, I'm sorry.
It'll, it'll, I mean, it's not going to add a terrible must speed, but still people are picking up the other...
I'm concerned about it because of safety, not because of the regulations or anything. And if it doesn't add to safety, then perhaps this is something I'm sure I'm concerned.
Well, I, at least the data that I saw with the volume of violations that were there, the speed wasn't inconsistent with the 45 mile an hour speed limit, other than the 35 mile an hour speed limit for that limited distance. So, again, that just kind of makes it unremarkable to me that, that people may or may not comply with that and to enforce that aggressively in those tight areas like that, lends itself to the idea that you're going to run a speed trap there. And it's been a recommendation of the city manager was, you just lower the speed limit to 35 all the way down to Harshman, or you just let traffic sort itself out sometimes.
Mr. Bonecamp, what still are you talking about there on airway? One phone from South Hill or one from...
I'm thinking the wrong, no, I'm thinking the other direction, going north. He's stating that there's a, that's the intersection I'm concerned about in that direction going south.
Well, and then what they're referring to, there also is the red light that...
Which is an airway.
The red light that exists at the entrance to that parking area. It's that, just prior to the parking area and then when they end at airway, that's the 35 mile an hour zone. And we look at the speed sign, they're properly spaced and as far as the law is concerned, once you're able to see those signs, you're obligated to slow down to that speed limit. So, we could have the signs there just as a, those are just advisory signs, so they're not mandated by law, whether they'd be effective or not. We would have, we'd have speed studies after we, prior to putting them up, and if they were up, we'd have speed studies to see if any of the differences.
That's all I, that's, thank you. Any other discussion?
You need a motion to kill that?
Yeah, I, yeah, I still have Mr. Cole wants to speak.
I have. The, the speed limit, or the sign that we have that tells people what their speed are, speed is, does that, does that seem to be effective?
Well, we use it widely throughout the city, one with different plates, you know, in specific areas, and then if it's not being used for a specific area, we ought to have it on Harshman.
Right. And my question is, does that seem to help?
Do you think it does in the short term? Do you think in the long term?
Well, my, my point would be, I believe I've seen where they actually have speed limit signs, okay, that says, the speed limit's 45, and then right below it, it's a permanent unit that tells you what your, what your speed is. And I didn't know what the cost or whether or not those might be effective in some of our, I'm thinking specifically along Harshman or down around the wall, and then a few other places throughout the city, depending on what the cost is. I think that would be a better safety measure than putting in the cameras, you know, and possibly even here on Harshman. I think the biggest safety measure we have right now on Harshman is something that I'm hoping will be gone by September, which is coming across Valley Street. It is a harsh board, and I think that's slows people down more than, more than anything right now.
Coming from all ways, all ways on, around intersection.
I don't know which direction I'm going to go.
Especially when you're driving a squad. It was just a thought, that those might, it might be interesting to, to at least get a cost estimate on what those types of signs would, would cost us because, and if there were any specific places that you might recommend putting them up permanently.
I honestly haven't seen what you're referring to yet, so like...
I'll take a picture of you one, and I will try and get a part number, they've got them on base right now.
I haven't, truthfully, I've never seen one, I mean, I've seen the ones that we have here, which is the only...
Right, the solar one that lives around.
I haven't seen any horrible ones that are under, under speed signs.
This is like a permanent sign that, I think it's got a little solar pack on the back, it's probably LED lit, and I'll, I'll see if I can, I'll see if I can get it.
Yeah, that's news to me, I haven't, I've never seen or even heard of those.
Okay. Any other discussion of numbers of council? Mr. Cole, would you like to...
Actually, I'm, I'm going to take a pass, I believe the information was, was discussed by council. I was just worried that you guys were working off the sales pitch from Red Flex, and it was patently deceptive, and I'm glad that you all recognized and made me proud, thank you.
You should be proud of your police chief, he gave us some excellent, excellent material that, and his staff really helped us through this, so I appreciate that much. Thank you, thank you. All right, I believe that, I think from consensus of council, it looks like that we're not going to move forward with this.
I think we're going to have a lot of happy people.
Well, that's another reason to do it either. Yeah, so, okay, so very good, we then will have consensus that we are not going to move forward with Red Flex. That's, that one is off the plate. Okay, next one is discussion of the trash agreement options. Ms. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Included in the packet is a memo regarding the choices for waste hauling and recycling RFP that we hope to issue in late summer, early fall. Contract with the city of Dayton expires at the end of this year, and as conceived in the memo, staff would recommend unlimited semi-automatic service with optional towders. If towders are desired by the residents, there are generally three options for residents to select depending on their household needs. Further, we would recommend a three-year contract with bimurkly bulk pickup, weekly yard waste pickup and dumpsters at the city facilities and a festival. Currently, we assess the collection fees annually on the property taxes, and we would recommend that we continue that practice. And I also have invited representatives from the city of Dayton, waste management, monkey and repolic services this evening, and with that, I'll take any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Manager, and welcome to the folks from the, our trash haulers. And we see we have Mr. McNeely.
Yes, sir.
Fred?
Yes.
Always welcome.
Good evening.
Good to see you again.
Yes, sir.
And John?
John, hello, Ms. Manager.
John? Welcome, John.
Thank you.
So, all right, you, as the manager said, you have our options before us and our recommendation. Is there any discussion about this?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bonecamp.
I don't know if any of the representatives in the audience can address this, what would the price difference be between the pay-as-you-go versus the semi-automatic sort of service? An idea?
Anybody want to?
Anybody want to rise and raise your hands?
Give us a, give us that wall card for the year?
10, 20, 30 percent difference?
Well, from, from waste management's standpoint, I'll, I'll take a stab at it. You can have a volume-based pay-as-you-go program with carts, just as well as you can with bags. There are systems out there that, that do that. Your recycling system's a key component to that. So, it's hard to say what your price differential is going to be because it all depends on your recycling component. Our recommendation would be to, and I only tell you this because I met with several communities this past week on this issue, we're converting several of our communities to cart recycling to boost the amount of material that they're recovering and trying to reduce the size of their trash output, either through lowering the size of the cart that they would use or the number of containers. City of Rosford, Ohio, they, they have gone to a cart, or they're getting ready to go to a cart program. They're on a volume base, they have a three-can limit.
You mean the Village of Rosford?
Rosford.
Oh, Rosford.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Rosford, he's a birthday. Didn't know they had trash.
So, there's several communities out there, of course, the Village of Yellow Springs, they have a volume-based program where, you know, there's a certain amount of containers that you can put out. So, it's really hard to tell you the price differences between those because it, it's going to depend on how you package everything.
Okay, so, so let's talk about the recycling component. I know the city of Dayton's doing a lot to encourage residents to, to increase the amount of material that they recycle. Has that been successful?
We've kind of done what John can talk about. What we've done is when we instituted the 96 gallon rollout container, that was, really been our biggest incentive for people to recycle more. Previous to that, we had a 22 gallon bin, so it was a very small bin. Once we implemented the 96 rollout, it would significantly increase our diversion. That's not what we wanted, but we are making some adjustments.
So, how can the city of Riverside play that same game? How, how will a city like Riverside accomplish those types of increased recycling goals?
Well, I think as a council, I think you guys might have to decide, do you want to really force recycling upon your residents or how do you want to encourage it? One, you can give people bigger container, a standard container, I think will help. Like giving people the option to bag it or tag it, I think you leave it a little more vulnerable for people not to participate. But if you give me a big container and let me know that, hey, you can put everything in this one container as a single stream, I think we all do single stream here, and maybe do what he said, give a smaller trash container, to say you only allow one container, or we're going to give you a 60 gallon trash container, that can help you be creative and promote recycling within Riverside.
So, how much do you believe the average residents will save a year once you're fully online with this?
Well, for, for us, it's different. I can't really say for you guys how much it's going to save your residents. The way I encourage everybody in the city of Dayton is we pay $38.25 a ton when I go to the South Transfer Station from Henry County. So, what I tell them, for every ton that we can divert from the trash into recycle, then we're saving that $38.25 a ton. So, I'm truly promoting this, one is a green thing, I want everybody to recycle and do good things with that. But the other piece financially for me and probably works in my budget, I don't know the rest of dollars that I can do other things with in my budget if I don't have to pay the tip and fee.
So, what do you think that amount of money is in your budget? We'll talk about your budget.
Oh, we do $2.6 million, is what I pay my county every year. It's about in that ballpark.
Based on the recycling effort?
Based on my own recycling, I'm still spending $2.6 million in trash.
Okay, right. And you've diverted...
And we've diverted...
300,000?
That's what we're trying to do, to understand, and I'll just tell you where, where we are. But we're, we're trying to figure that dynamic out. I've given people large container, but for some reason, I'm not getting all the diversion that I want to get, you know what I mean? I'm getting more recycling, but my trash is not really dropping, and that's what Mr. Ritchie and I are still trying to figure out that piece of the puzzle. Why is that? It's because I got more in my trash container, now I'm cleaning out my garage, I'm cleaning out my basement, I'm cleaning out my yard or whatever, I'm putting more in my trash container. What John mentioned, one idea, and we're having those discussions, well, I give you a smaller trash container. That way, I'm kind of forcing you more into the recycling, instead of letting you have Instead of letting you have two ninety-six gallons, which is what we have now, you have a ninety-six for trash and a ninety-six to recycle. If I make that a sixty gallon, okay, now you're gonna have to put more into that recycle container because you're not gonna get it all in that sixty-gallon trash container.
Because I, I mean, that's one of the, the things I think is gonna be critical is, is, is that recycling component.
That is true.
And if we can get some suggestions on how best to implement it for our city, that would certainly be helpful for me to understand what works and what doesn't work in that regard, so.
I think when she read off your assistant city manager, that you guys leaving it right now is an option.
The toters.
Not as mandatory recycling, right?
Right, we would want, not the bins, but the larger toters, but it would still be optional.
Okay, thank you.
And to that point, I mean, we, we do allow, the, the city of Springborough recently went to cart recycling. They're another community. They, they're doing every other week cart recycling. They gave their residents the option of three different carts. I do not recommend that. I'd say two sizes is okay. Or going to the bins. You can still use the bins. The, if you have an automated system, depending on the type of automated trucks, there are some people that don't want to use a cart. For whatever reason, I'm not sure why, but they, they just don't. That's a change that they don't wanna make, so they still do. Most of the people like in Springborough are those that live in condominiums because it's a, it's more of a storage issue than it is anything else. So, you'll have those. So, we've accommodated that. So, you can go to a cart system, but still allow the bin. Our experience has been, and, and it is interesting, Mr. Sol brings up a great point. We've seen recycling tonnage increase almost by twenty-five percent in tonnage when you do these programs, but you don't see that big, huge difference. You'd expect it to fall off your tonnage, but I, I think, I think he's absolutely right. People say, well, gosh, I, I'm not filling up my trash can as much as I used to, so I'm gonna put more yard waste in or I'm gonna do this, or I'm gonna do things that I've never done before because now I have space. I'm not, I don't have to carry three or four things down. The other thing that I can't tell you with the carts that we found that weren't quite extracting, people that never recycled before will tend to do the carts because there's an anti-litter part to that. And that is you don't have recyclables blowing all over the community with carts. And that's, that is a huge incentive for people because those people that, well, I'll recycle because it's the right thing to do and they go out and the next thing you know, it's all over their neighborhood. That is very frustrating to people and so those types of carts really help play onto that. So, the, the, again, I, I think you can accomplish the increased recycling program by the utilization of carts, but make it flexible enough for your residents that they don't want to use that cart. But they can still use the bin if that's what they so choose and most programs can accommodate that.
I have one more question, and that's for anybody out there. If, if we were to incorporate a very kind of stringent recycling sort of, would that lower our costs as a city? Is it something that's, we lower your bid? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Notice the white status.
Let me, let me answer by giving you a community. That way, I'm not telling you anything. City of Rossford, the one that I mentioned earlier. The, the city manager there, he used to be my boss when I worked for the county commissioners up there. And he came to me when he became the city manager there and said, you know, we've got budget issues and I need you to help me. I left the county and went to work for Waste Management. What we did there is very much like what Fred just mentioned earlier. And that is, we gave them unlimited recycling. They went to a three container. And we charged the city separate for tonnage. So, the tonnage portion is removed totally out of their cost and we give them monthly tonnage reports. So, the more that their people recycle, the lower their costs are because they're paying less disposal. They are paying the same rate that they were paying in two thousand and four because of their increased recycling.
And how much of other communities gone up in the same time period?
Um, I would say year over year, about two and a half to four percent.
So, over that time period, you're saying probably a twenty to thirty percent increase?
I would say for them, yeah. Now, they've, they've seen incremental price increases just because we're a full-profit company. But, I mean, the, the more that they recycle, and that's why they're not looking to go to carts because they, they've got people using six, seven recycle bins. I mean, we're literally delivering forty carts almost, or, or recycle bins every week to that community. And they can't keep them. Now, I, I know that some people are using them for storage. But that's an example of how recycling can really do that. For a community like the city of Dayton that, that is internally doing it, that's a budget issue for them. For a community that is, I, I personally don't recommend communities when they get an opportunity to have disposal included in their costs because you can separate that out and there can be savings. But again, as, as Mr. Sol said, you've gotta make a commitment to recycling. You have to do it or you will, you won't benefit at all.
Thanks.
Mr. McNeely.
If you put the onus back on the individual citizen and you can force people to do things and we all know it doesn't work. If, if you have high-volume people that are gonna use a lot, if you go to a cart system, if you're using a ninety-six gallon cart, there's an additional charge for each additional ninety-six. Okay, varying size of trash also. The senior citizen, the single resident can get by, like my wife and I, we've got a ninety-six gallon trash container and it'd take us months to fill that up. But we've got a recycle container that we fill every week. So, the options that you're asking for, Village of Gold Springs, it's John, we do Village of Gold Springs. We've given them recycled containers as well as bins. You reward the people that recycle for the fact that they're paying more for their trash with the size of bin that they have. And it's self, we, we've got an educational program that we link into your, that you can link on to right through your, your link. We have an educational system in place. We do tours of our recycling center. We just put, well, the money we put into our class recycling alone, I committed to it. Giving people options and letting them make the decision, do they wanna spend more? You don't wanna spend more, but giving them the option of if, if they wanna spend more, fine. If they wanna recycle, fine. We'll educate them to recycle. We have the tools. But I'm just saying, you know, it's America.
I guess I'm, I'll be back on your question just before we go over it. So, if we would get a smaller container instead of the large, the ninety-six that we have now, would you be able to bid that cheaper or would that not matter? And anyone who can answer?
It could be a potential for all of us.
It has a potential being, so if we would do like, for example, what Dayton does, that only we would get a smaller trash container, toter, and the regular ninety-six gallon recycling, there is potential savings to our residents.
Well, you gather variety even on the recycle. But the point, we do a ninety-six and a thirty-two just for scenario that he just described. I get the calls, I'm, it's just me and, and my wife, or it's just me on a single person, I, I'm not gonna do a ninety-six. So, we have a thirty-two gallon option. So, you can do that on both sides. You can have recycle, you can have a ninety-six, you can have a sixty or thirty-two, and trash in the same way. So, it's just how you wanna, wanna mix it up.
Ms. Manager, could we do that as a city? How difficult, could we, how difficult would it be for us as a city to determine who wants a different-sized trash bin and put it on the taxes like we're doing it now? Is that something that we could do?
We could do, um, so you're talking more of a volume-based.
Right.
It would be a limited, whatever.
Yeah, forty gallon toter and a ninety-six gallon toter for recycle.
Yeah, we would have to look at that because we would need the resident to make that selection and then figure out if that would be possible to put that, assess that back on their property and separate it that way since it's the same price for everyone right now. But we could definitely bid it that way and see how it goes.
Well, right, right now, okay, we're, the baseline price is whatever it is for everybody, okay? If you want a ninety-six gallon toter, you pay, we, I get a bill from the city of Dayton for an additional dollar twenty-five a month.
Oh, that comes from the city?
Two dollars a month. And I pay that because I want a ninety-six gallon toter. Because, because the last time this was brought up, y'all decided that everybody didn't want a toter, so only those that had a toter would pay, and they would pay that extra. And I'm willing to pay that extra.
Because I don't want a toter.
So, I think, I think that that is more, that, that is more reasonable. You base it on, okay, everybody is based on two large trash bins and you limit them to that. Unless they are willing to pay the extra for the toter, and I'm sure that the two dollars a month also bills in, not, is not just the amount of the toter, but it's the additional trash pickup cost too, that they build that into there. So, unless we're going to go to something like the city of Centerville where they actually come out there and they weigh it and you get billed based on the amount of trash you actually go away, and I don't believe any of y'all folks have those trucks yet and we're not sure, I'm not, I'm not, I, I think the, the jury's still out on whether that's really gonna work or not and whether or not it's cost-effective to folks for, for throwing trash away.
Well, that's kind of what Steve's question is, is it cost-effective to get a forty gallon versus a ninety-six gallon? Uh, maybe put forty gallon at the baseline.
Okay, so you, you do that, okay, but I still want a ninety-six gallon. I'm willing to pay.
You have to pay more.
I'm, I'm okay with that. And I think we've already got that with the existing contract that we have. It's baseline on, on what, on, on, on some sort of baseline. And then if you want more, you, you pay the extra through getting the toter. I like the idea of having a larger toter for my recycling because right now, that bin is not big enough most of the time for, for my recycling needs. And I also see that if we downsize the trash and upsize the recycling, the people are just gonna say, well, I'm just gonna throw my leftovers into the, into the recycling and it's picked up anyway and whatever happens, happens. So, I, I think.
Does that happen?
Oh, yeah. And, and believe it or not, people from outside of the community come in and use your ninety-six gallon toters.
So, so, you know, I, I think, I think you go on the baseline and you say, you know, this is the standard cost for whatever, whatever they think is normal standard, two trash cans. And if you want something, if you wanna get the, the ninety-six gallon toter, then it's cost you, you know, uh, an extra two dollars a month. If you want a thirty-two gallon toter, then it costs you an extra, you know, a dollar fifty a month or whatever, whatever the number comes up. But that, that's my opinion.
I wanna make sure I understand what you're saying. You're saying to the limit, the amount of garbage that people, I mean, you don't want an unlimited service. I wanna make sure I understand where you're going.
I, I don't, I want, I want a baseline, for no better word, a baseline service.
Which is?
Which is whatever.
How much trash I produce, I can put out for the same price?
Yeah, which would, which would, which I guess would be limiting to two trash cans or whatever. But, but if, if I.
It's currently not.
It's currently not.
No.
Okay, so then.
I just wanna make sure.
I, I guess, I guess I would, I would want to see the numbers to make that decision. Okay, if we, if we limit it to, if we do limit it to two trash cans per, okay? Or unlimited based on whatever, what the difference in that, in that price is? Because if it's, if it's, you know, ten dollars a year per household, maybe that's not, you know, but if it's a hundred dollars per household, then maybe it is. Mr. Ridgell?
Yeah, what I was gonna add is just, one of the things that you would wanna consider when you start talking about whether to require people to use containers or not to, that also makes a difference whenever it comes to pricing. Because if you go into a community and say, everybody is going to select a size of container, you know, if you want a sixty-four or a ninety-six, but if everybody has a container, then you can look at automating that area and go from a three-person crew to a one-person crew. And that can generate a cheaper rate for the city because you're, you're allocating fewer resources to provide that service. The other thing is, is that just like with the recycling not generating, the blowing debris, the trash, uh, you know, all the privately-owned containers, and if you look at how many of them have the wheels whenever they was originally bought and then six months later, those wheels are gone. So, those, those containers are now very unstable and very lightweight. So, any times you have, you know, high-volume wind or gust of winds, those containers blow all over the place where the larger containers do not. So, it does help with the appearance of the community. You know, if you have the trash out, it does help with reducing the amount of loose debris and stuff that can blow around. So, there's definite benefits to, to having the containers.
Just one of the benefits I think I can speak for all of us on, you make a good point on the container. I think a law of us use a container body has at least a ten-year warranty. So, as far as any issues with containers, we can do repair or replacement because they pretty much come with, I think, as, and does your standard about ten years for all of us, right?
Mr. McNeely?
Uh, and, and again, it's your contract. You can do what you wanna do. So, if you wanna bid a three-tiered, unlimited, containerized, lower volume, ask us and then we'll give you the prices for each one individually. And then you've got something to choose from about what you guys want. You can, we've got lots of time. That's the nice thing about talking about this. You can customize it, put it together, kick it around. Citizens can hear about it.
No, January first is being pretty quick.
I know, I know, yeah, it always does. But, but again, you know, we work for you guys and you work for your voters and people in Riverside. Yeah, you got choices and you got time. So, go put it together, ask us what you want. We'll give you the prices and take it from there.
Yeah, we can definitely write the book down if you want.
Right, well, we, but the, the point of being here and talk about it today is trying to.
We can.
You narrow it down a little bit. Uh, Mr. Kirk?
A question for people who are here that are on a profession. In the communities where you have a volume-based program, some people have a smaller-sized container. How do you manage that from the standpoint of, I suppose it's an honor system to make sure that, that the people adhere to what they signed up for, but where somebody puts out more trash than what their container will hold? Do you just not pick it up that week? You pick up the container, but you leave the, the bag, assume that the bag, you leave the bag there, you pick up the container?
Well, speaking, speaking for us, we put a sticker on it saying, you know, it, it's outside the container. This is what you're paying for. And then our driver would contact the village to let you know that at this address that happened so they don't call in and say, I was missed. Again, we, we've got it set up. There's nothing perfect in any of this. And speaking for myself, come Thanksgiving or Christmas, if you've got a containerized system, I'm gonna have extra trash I'm gonna have to sit on until next, the next time around. It's, again, you brought up a good point that you've got extra toters. A lot of people have an extra toter just for that reason, if they've got room. A lot of people don't have room for a toter, particularly a ninety-six gallon toter. Back to Mr. Mayor, I think you said you don't want a toter.
Right.
Uh, it's, one size doesn't fit all, which is, again, the more, you know, the more, the more options you put out for us to build on. Again, we're, we're trying to get something.
Well, second question, and I've got a third question. The second question is, for those people who select, say, a minimum volume, finding however you want, small container, are they excluded from yard waste? Are they excluded from bulk item?
Back to how you write it. If it's a bulk item, unlimited, how's it pick up now? Do you call it? Do you call it in, is it picked up monthly, weekly? It's pretty much, we're, again, we're working for you, and the yard waste is one of those, do you want it to be separate, or do you wanna count it as trash? Uh, you can either put it in with the trash, or you can have a separate yard, but then there, if you have a separate yard, then you've got a separate truck and you've got more of the carbon footprint. Uh, or you've got another truck running through the neighborhood. How are you doing it now?
Well, right now, we're providing weekly bulk collection, and it's not related to the trash as far as there being a limit or anything. We do collect the yard waste with the bulk, or with the regular trash, whenever they set it out.
There you go, yeah.
Let me just bring, let me just add before you go on to the other question, cause I wanna make sure. On your, on your first question, there are communities in this area, Butler Township, Tip City, they have people that, they have a thirty-five gallon container cart. They're called low-volume users. They can, especially like during Christmas time and things of that nature. If they wanna go down to, in Tip City, if you wanna go down to the municipal hall or to a local grocery store, they can buy an extra trash bag, that's a wastemanger bag, for two dollars and fifty cents or something. And they can put that out with their cart, because, let's face it, during the summertime parties, birthday parties, et cetera, you can do that, so just because you have, if you select a, a smaller container, because most of the time, that's what your needs are. But except for if you have a family reunion at your house or a graduation party, you may have that one weekend where you need that. So there are programs out there that you can make adjustments, so that the residents don't have to sit on that garbage for another week. Uh, the way that the city of Rosford does it, their, with their limit, is during, from Christmas through the second week of January, the whole community is under, unlimited. And that way, during what is typically the heaviest time of the year for them, they allow, they don't put the container limit on, and that gives people the opportunity. Now, again, if you want to go beyond your three-container limit, you can buy an extra bag, uh, at the grocery store or at the municipality to accommodate those heavier days that you have. So when you have a, a, a low-volume program, where you're saying a thirty-five gallon container, you, there are some options there, so you, you're not having to reject garbage every week. Now, if they don't pay for that bag, then you're gonna tag it and say, well, you know, you, you haven't paid for your, this bag is not part of the program, and you need to go out and get a sticker or a bag or whatever it is.
Let me just make one point before you get to the third question real quick. Uh, what both these gentlemen talked about, depending on how, like I stated early, how progressive you wanna be with recycling, and I think you gentlemen agree, probably not even shitting your waste is recycling. I mean, if you think about, oh, you pay for your cart, or your plastic, your bottle, your glass, all this recyclable. So when you think about trash, if you truly committed to recycling, you can deal with the smaller trash potential, okay? Everything can pretty much go into your recycled container, if you're truly committed to recycling.
And my real motivation for asking a question about the small volume and how do you deal with the exceptions, is that, uh, the question for two gentlemen from the private sector, is in those communities where you have small volume, what's the feedback you hear from the local government leaders as far as, the adverse impact on cleanliness of the community from situations where people, these, or, people end up with more trash than what they're permitted to put out, and so now they go down to the cul-de-sac in the middle of the night and they dump it, or they go back behind the shopping center and they dump it, uh, because they don't wanna hold it for another week until the trash, uh, collection comes around again. What, what's the experience?
Well, it happens, uh, it's the same thing with recycling. You, you can offer people a larger recycling container, and if I don't wanna recycle, I'm gonna pay for it, I'm gonna throw it out with the trash. If I don't wanna go get an additional bag of trash, or go through, or have an additional toter, I'm gonna throw it. They call, you, you've got people that are, it's, nothing's perfect, uh, you, you'll, you'll have those. But it's the minority is some of the majority. And the fact that there is a perfect system, there, there are ways to address it, but will somebody do it? Can't force them.
Gentlemen, a response to, uh, Mr. Kirk's? Uh, it's pretty minority of.
Well, I, I mean, the communities where we've seen, where they've gone to a, a volume-based or a container limit program. I wanna be careful because the demographics of those communities do matter. Now, what I can tell you is the city of Toledo, I'll use them as an example because they're, they're not one of my customers. They did, they were in public collection, they just recently went to private. Before they went to private collection, though, they banned all of the, uh, stuff from being in the, in the alley. I mean, they just said, no more alley pickup. And of course, the, the rhetoric was, there's gonna be a lot of illegal dumping and things of that nature. It was just the opposite. Their alleys became cleaner, obviously, um, people began to set out more, uh, they went to the cart system. So if you, if you were to talk to the city, I, I don't think the dumping issues became heavier there. Uh, the city of Rosford, uh, they didn't have, I mean, in any community, you're gonna find people that can maneuver around a system because they're gonna, that's their habit. If they can find a way to save money, they're gonna find a way to save it, cause that's, that's just what they do. And so no matter what system you come up with, those people will always find a way around this system. They'll either say, well, gosh, I've got an extra bag, but my neighbor's only got two out. Can I put my third one with it? And they, and they do that, it doesn't really make a big difference in the system then. Uh, but people are always going to find ways to maneuvers. But it, it, in, in my opinion, based on what I have seen over the years, both in, both in public and private, the systems don't materially change. Matter of fact, what I've seen from big communities and small communities, when you go to a cart system with a, with different sizes, giving people, and I agree, you should always give people options, cause no two people are the same. Your community becomes cleaner, you do not see as much litter. So, and, and I'm a councilman where I live, and we have carts. So I'm, I, you know, I'm a little biased, I, I've, I've got a big bias towards carts because I hate, 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 hate litter. I just don't like it. And the communities where I've seen this program, up in Minnesota, the east coast, west coast, carts, carts are the answer. The only, the one thing that I would say is if you do look at going to carts or automated systems, consider a five-year contract instead of a three-year.
It is five.
Pardon?
We've been doing five.
Is, okay, I, I thought I had heard of three years. Okay.
We do have five years, certainly.
That's what we've always been doing.
Well, we had, I, I think, Mr. Stubble, then, then we have a three-year, two-one-year option.
We have to have a five, three options. And the five, and, and I would agree with John on that, and just, uh, just elaborate a little bit more. I think what he was getting at is the cost of the carts. Whenever you enter into an agreement, if you do a three-year agreement, well, then now you have to factor in recouping the amount of money that you spent on the carts in a shorter time period. So that means that you're gonna have to increase the cost of that three-year period.
Cart system like he's talking about?
Yes, yes.
Let me ask you a question.
Uh, Mr. Smith? Are you okay?
Mr. Smith? Oh, yes, I have a few, a few questions. Uh, could you explain this cart? I'm not familiar with the cart.
Um, well, it's, it's, it's about up to here.
Yeah.
And it's about, you know, I hate doing round, cause I'm, it's, it's almost my size. And it's, it's shaped like this, and it's got wheels on the bottom, it's got a lid, and the lid's attached, so the lid can't blow off. And you, and you just.
Same thing as a toter, looks like a toter.
Yeah, I, we, we don't use toter because that's a brand name. Toter's actually a company.
Okay.
And, and our industry, yeah, in our industry, it's a cart, because toter's actually a company.
Oh, I see.
And that's not who we buy our. Our carters with a small T from.
It's a toter versus toter LLC.
And the other, my, one of my other questions here is the, uh, what would the cost is to, uh, put together a survey to send out to the residents and determine what size toter or cart they would like to have for their trash, you got any idea?
Uh, we're talking like a mail survey or?
Well, that's, I guess, we'd have to get the word out somewhere to the public, just to get back with us as to what size toter they would like, or cart. So I think we need to look at the cost there.
I mean, one way of doing it is we just do an RFP and we, we bid it and have each, have all the options for the toters. And then when we make that selection of whatever company we, we choose, the company does that for us and finds out from the resident what toter you want.
Okay, that's.
Or carts, I mean.
You can use.
Skitterizer.
Well, my, my last question real quick, is, uh, I, I know where the city of Dayton puts the trash can after they're done, like, after they emptied it. Where do the other companies put the trash can after they empty it, could?
Where it was when we picked it up.
So you put it back in the yard, on the apron, in the driveway?
If, if that's where the customer has placed it, um, that's where we tell our drivers out. I mean, they're human beings, and sometimes one driver may not say it exactly, but we, we have service standards.
You leave them in the street?
We don't, because, uh, it could end up getting hit. Now, I do know a lot of communities that do that, uh, because it's more stable. Especially, now, if it's on a thoroughfare, but out in the cul-de-sac areas and things of that nature, where there's no devil strip or things of that nature, I know a lot of communities that, that do that.
Residents don't like it.
Yeah, so.
Yes, when I, when I'm trash day, when I leave my house, uh, after the trash people have ran, it's an obstacle course to get down my street. I gotta, you know, swerve around this can, this can, that lid, this toter, uh.
That's just.
You know, it's, it's aggravating.
That's specification requirement.
Nothing says it can get done.
Yeah, well, that's a specification requirement, just put in your specs where, where you want that container to be placed at.
It's in the specs.
And.
Yeah, it's like a low-grain.
It's in the specs.
Take it out of the curb and you put it back in the curb.
I, I, I mean, again, from our standpoint, and I, I'll always speak for my company. If you come to us and you tell us that we're not placing the carts back pursuant to the contract, you have a performance bond in that contract. For a company like ours, the size that we are, if you threaten to pull that performance bond over carts being in the, not, not, being put in the street, I can guarantee you, my district manager, myself, every available staff member will make sure. We cannot afford to have a performance bond pulled. That, I mean, you're talking, i- if the city of Riverside pulls a performance bond on a company our size, that reverberates throughout the industry. I mean, my, my competitors, I'm sure, will not give me a pass on that, that I, my performance bond was pulled. So my recommendation to any community is, and a lot of communities have this, uh, they have penalties for failure to perform. Not, not even the performance bond, Tip City, they have a five-hundred-dollar penalty. If you do not comply with their service standards within a twenty-four-hour period of receiving a complaint, or fixing the complaint, within that twenty-four hours, you're fined five-hundred dollars. And that con, and they don't, they don't send you, uh, an invoice. It comes, when we submit the invoice, they take it off of that payment. Now, I can tell you, that's never, and you can call them to check on this, that's never happened to us. But those kinds of things are very common in governmental specs to have penalties for service types of things. The biggest one, of course, at the end of the day, is that performance bond. Because it is, you can have a hundred thousand dollar performance bond, which isn't very large. But the thought of having that pulled against us, that's billions of dollars in business now, so, very powerful.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Uh, definitely, uh, two things. The recycling bins that we have from Dayton say glass, metal, plastic, so that's all I've been putting in. But you just said paper and cardboard too. But I think most folks re decide the recycling bin and only put that in there. So I think we need to educate folks a little bit, number one. And/or if we're going to go to a bigger cart slash toter, whatever you wanna call it, we need to make sure that everybody knows what they can recycle, because I think that will help increase the number of recycling. The other thought I had was that we have, we're putting this on folks' taxes, right? So we have to divvy this out evenly or properly. And I think by giving folks a selection choice is gonna make it a little more difficult to do that, so.
But it's possible.
Well, I'm not saying it's impossible, but if we do something similar, close to what we're doing, which is unlimited, but with a toter extra cost, if you did that and said, okay, everybody gets a baseline of the thirty-two gallon, but if I choose a ninety-six gallon, or, or a sixty-four, whatever, then they get billed by the, the company for the extra. I, I think that is a reasonable, but then at least everybody knows that they've got the baseline of where the baseline is, and, you know. And the other option is, is that we stop doing this as a city, and we let folks pick their own. Although I'm afraid of that, because some folks won't pick anybody and they'll pick their neighbor's yard instead. So, uh, that, that's the negative side of that. But I think if we, if we come up with a, a minimum, minimum standard, whatever we think the, the lowest level is, and then, and, and we charge, and we, and we put that on everybody's tax, and then if they want the larger cart slash toter, then the, the company can, can charge for that. That would be my suggestion.
Under the current contract, though, your charges of the toter rental, it's not for the quantity that you put out there.
Yeah, but I believe.
Under their contract.
I believe, yeah, but I believe they're, I believe that it's sort of built in there.
Now, it's a charge. With Dayton, Dayton right now, with, you, of course, you guys have toters that get picked up by, in Dayton, by the machine.
By an automated truck.
And we don't.
Right.
How much of a problem is that for you guys? And you have to put another man on, or, or, I mean, obviously, you would think that you would make more, you would save money because it's automated and all you need is a driver. Versus the way we do it, you have to have one or two people out there throwing it in. Would you guys prefer that we go to a toter, or are you, you guys are okay with?
You're asking, I think Donna already has spoken, I'm, I'm with you. My first preference would be everybody would have a cart or a toter, that would be our two first preferences.
Would the bin be?
It's up to you though.
But is the bin better?
Operationally, that works better for us.
Yeah.
But is the bin better? I can.
I can expose that to you.
That's true.
But the issue that probably then comes up, that you don't, uh, provide a volume option. Everybody gets the same size toter.
Right.
Right.
And they get the same fee. Every, every property owner gets the same monthly quarter, they get the same fee, because you only have one size toter, because it fits the, the specs of the truck.
You can still have multiple sized toter.
Well, you can.
I mean, the toter, I mean, you either have one this small, or you have one this tall, and they're all picked up by the same machinery. So we can still have the baseline.
Baseline lower.
Thirty-two gallon, and if I, and if somebody wanted the sixty-four or ninety-six, they could, they could pay the rental or the extra cost, however they build that in for the larger size.
But, but if you do that, then those weeks, you have extra trash, and you put it out there in a bag, the trash doesn't get picked up.
Right.
Because the arms of that truck won't go around that.
Right. And I think there's an understanding of citizens, Dayton citizens have gotten used to it. Now, I don't like it, like you, they're thinking, no, they're not, they don't like it, but they do get used to that.
Well, we all, cause one of my questions is gonna be, uh, cause we all get the issue of citizens who contact this and say, well, I go to Florida for three months in the winter, and I don't wanna pay for trash pickup during those three months. and I don't want to pay for trash pickup during those three months.
And you don't. I mean, there are, most communities...
Well, see, the issue is, in your base, in your bid, based on, dependent on the size or independent of the size of container, do you factor in, or how do you factor in what I'll call the opportunity cost? And that is, there's a cost for that truck to go up and down the street. Doesn't matter how much or how little trash somebody throws in. There's a, a basic cost to the, the service provider for that truck to go up and down the street. And you all don't know when somebody's on vacation in Florida for three months. You don't know when they go, when they come back. And the question is, how do you maintain, how do we as a council maintain fairness in the system so that the people who don't spend three months in Florida aren't subsidizing those who do?
Most communities that we work with have vacation hold requirements. So, when you, when that resident goes on vacation for three months or three weeks or whatever it is, their service, just like their, you know, newspaper or mail or whatever they want to do, they put that on hold and they don't get charged for that time that they're off. So, their service is literally put on hold and they are not charged for that.
But the question you're asking is, the truck's rolling up the street, we've already amortized that into the overall cost of the contract and what makes that fair for everybody else? Well, that's the way the contract works. It's called a snowbird. Those people don't pay for their trash service, but the truck still rolls and that's amortized into, and it's...
Part of...
Part of doing business, yeah. Same thing like you said. If you go on vacation, the mailman goes up and down, milkman, whatever goes up and down.
Yeah, you still have a...
Milkman, I know, I'm old.
Yeah, because you look at all the other utilities, there's still a minimum charge for electricity.
Right.
Minimum charge for gas, minimum charge for sanitary sewer.
Yeah.
Minimum charge for water.
Exactly.
That goes, that continues whether you're in Florida for three months or you're here.
Regardless, yeah.
Well, maybe the problem with the toters, I don't like the big toters because they're so big. Now, the other side of the point is, can't use much in it. So, you know, I, I like to bring out two small trash cans versus one big toter. And, you know, and last time we bid it, the bid was pretty good for trash and then like Mr. Deputy Mayor Denny was saying, you just add $2 more for the toter. I personally like that contract, but I just didn't like, I don't like the big toters. But again, you got, there's issues both sides of that.
So, you give us a lot to think about. We have a lot to learn, quite a bit here because of, yeah, this is something we need to sit back and think and get our ideas what we want. I made a lot of notes, which is very seldom I ever do. This one was pretty, pretty much educational for me. So, I would rather sit back and get all these thoughts put together on a piece of paper and then we come back in later time and see if we can get the parameters laid out for, for contract bids. Mr. Gray?
My question for three representatives here is, what would you be looking at from the city officials to help provide the mix of demographics for you doing your bidding? How, how do you determine, if we're looking at a volume base, how many people need a small toter or prefer a small container, how many prefer a medium size, how many prefer a larger size? Seems to me the volume of waste that comes out of the community is the volume of waste. It doesn't matter what size container people use. A lot of your bid is going to be based on the volume of waste that comes out because that determines how much equipment and manpower you have to have to support that waste collection and pay the tipping fees. For example, Mr. McNally, you were talking about you have a 96 gallon toter, but it would take you three weeks to fill it up. But that doesn't change the volume of waste that comes out of the community where you live.
No.
The volume is the volume regardless of whether you hold it for two weeks and then put it out or you put something out every week. So, the question would be, what are we going to be looking for from our staff when they're writing bid specs to help you determine how to bid and figure out what, if we, if we do a, a volume based, a volume type of program, how to determine how many people, how many, how many households would have maybe a small container, whatever that size is, how many would have a large, one large container so that you can bid competitively?
I don't think any of us can really give that out. That's really going to have to be options. I mean, we can all probably give, like he said, give options. These are the three container options and I guess we're going to look to you guys to kind of know your constituency, what they may want. But it's no way that we can know how many people are going to want a small, who's going to want a 40, who's going to want a 64, who's going to want a 96. Unless you do the survey, which, you know, to get some feel.
As I said, we got, we got the operations, we'll drive around, we kind of look at communities where they have the trash and et cetera, et cetera, where the apartments, just to get a feel for it. But we'll get numbers from you guys about how many. City of Dayton tells us, you know, how many tons you've done, so we've got an idea how many tons we've been for. But, yeah, crystal ball to say what somebody's going to set out and if, okay, if I drive past somebody and I favor them in and then I get the contract and there's a for sale sign there, there goes that. Yeah, it's, you know, but you hit the, you hit the nail on, there is a baseline for operations. We all have to pay for the truck, the salary, the insurance, et cetera, the...
The only thing we recycling would throw that off.
Exactly.
Uh huh.
Exactly.
And particularly if we're going to increase the recycling, like all of us want, all of us, again, what a crucial, increasing recycling because again, we're all facing the fact that the less trash is better for all of us.
So, Mr. McLeever and Donna, do you guys have trucks that just pick up the, the cart and dump it or do you, you do, you always have a person dumping in, in the truck?
We're all ready.
We can, we've got trucks that do both. We've got trucks that are automated, we've got trucks that are automated, but you can still throw individual bags. I mean, trucks are pretty variable in the industry now. I mean, in this community, I almost said something I didn't want to, almost. I said, what we can do. Well, it's not going to be a trade secret, but I mean, there are, if, depending on what system you guys wanted to go to and there was a question asked earlier, what, what would, you're going to get your best bid when you limit the variables.
Right.
That's where you get your best bid. When you, when you have us guessing, we're going to, we're going to protect the numbers because we can't afford to lose money on contracts. That's not what we do. So, the, the fewer variables that you have, the better you're going, your numbers are going to be. You can't worry about if people are going to recycle. We'll figure that out. I mean, gosh, everybody that's in this room can pretty much tell you based on their knowledge of the industry, how much trash is going to get recycled if you go to a cart recycling or if you stay with what you got. We can figure that out. When you start going with multiple options and you don't have, I can, I'll go back to Yellow Springs, we'll use that model. They know exactly how many customers use four bags, three bags, or six bags. Because when we do the bid, they give us those numbers. So, that takes the guesswork out of it for us. In your situation, you don't have those, getting back to the word, the baseline, you don't have those numbers. So, we're going to use our expertise the best that we can to try to determine, okay, 75% of the people are going to be low volume. Of course, that's not the right number, but I'm not going to tell you what we believe it is. But there, there, you know, there, there are some industry things that we can look at if, if that's what you're going to bid. Now, I can tell you, the more variables you have, you can also lose better interest because some people say, I'm not willing to take the risks on this. The risks are too high. So, if they, if you have a, a three, and I'll use this word, I'll wash my mouth out later, toter. If you have a, if you have a 35 gallon toter, a 64 gallon toter, a 96 gallon toter, and you want pricing for all of those, at the end of the day, the reality is the price difference between those are not going to be that great because you don't want to take the risk of what if everybody chooses this because the price is so good? And then what do you do? You know, so, there, when you don't have baseline, when you don't have a historical program, you put the risk on the company and your numbers go up. And that, I will tell you from a bidding history, that's the bottom line. You limit our risk, you get better numbers.
This is probably a historical question and probably somewhere that the gentlemen from the city of Dayton can answer. What's our current recycling rate in City of Riverside? Do you have any information on that?
Yeah, we've got tonnage. We can tell you what the tonnage is.
I just can't...
Yeah, we can get all that information for you.
Very high. I mean, Riverside...
River High.
Very, very well.
Yeah, you have about a little over 50% participation rate, which is very good. And that's what just happens 32 gallon containers. You know, because whenever we did the bid, whenever we did the contract five years ago, we didn't include 96 gallon containers. And we've had a lot of residents that want from Riverside. So, that's something I would definitely look at offering. I can tell you, there's, I've talked to a lot of residents from Riverside that have want those. Whenever you start talking about the tonnages for recycling, I may even have it with you.
I'll take some notes.
Right now, this year through May, it's just under 500 tons in recycling.
Do you know what our, our waste disposal, I mean, our non-recyclables, is it 10, 20%? Do you know?
Your tonnage, your tonnage as far as the other way goes is right around 2,500 tons.
Who would give a hell of that?
Yeah. And then whenever you, then whenever you go, we can look at the year end, I can give you the year end for 2011 and 10. For recycling in 2011, it was 1,149 tons. And in 10 for recycling, it was 1,063. And then whenever we talk trash, 2011 tonnage was 7,356 tons and 2010 was 6873.
Somewhere in the order of 10 to 15% recycling rate.
Yeah. And, and that diversion doesn't include, you know, any of your other recycling efforts that, that you're doing that, you know, we don't have the tonnage for.
Thanks for that information.
But look, who's to explain half the numbers that he gave? When you talk participation, we're talking about the 7,000 households in Riverside. So, how many of those people have a recycling container to pick up? When you're talking diversion, now I'm trying to compare that. Well, this is how many tons I have recycled and this is what I have in the trash.
So, is that, are those diversion numbers comparable to city of Dayton or your...
Oh, you do better than us.
Really?
Our tonnages are a lot more, but it's just because of the difference in population and number of households.
But he wants to know, you guys do much better than us with recycling. I'm giving you your credit.
And, and also, do you guys have weekly recycling? Riverside? I mean, the missing thing to me that would really help promote your recycling program, you have the large containers, you know, going with the 96 gallons. And I don't know which size bin that you've had.
I've got the real...
Okay, so that's the old ones. All the 32s that we have now and the 96s, they all have all the information on it. They also have a color coded sticker with icons that show the paper and, and all those things. So, it's a lot easier for, for people to determine what's recycled and what's not. So, I think what you have is what we originally handed out in the 2007.
Right. It's still in good shape.
That's hard to believe.
The other thing about automated pickup, we don't have curbs in others.
Right, right. So, so when you come down the street and there's a toter there, does it, does...
Cart.
Does the machine pick them up then and the guy just walks away?
No, we do a semi automated route.
In Riverside. In Riverside, it's, it's a real load packer that has, we call it tipper assist. It's a, so the, the ground person still grabs the container, pushes it over to the truck, hooks it up to the lifting mechanism, operates that, empties it.
I see. But in Dayton?
We use both in Dayton. We have automated routes and we have semi automated routes.
About 40% of Dayton, 42% is automated, fully automated.
Only one guy's driving the truck.
One guy who's driving on the right hand side.
Why don't you have all of it?
We have alleys, you don't. That's the reason why it hurts me that you guys are not automated. You know, because it really, truly, Riverside is laid out and is set up that would be ideal for an automated type of collection.
That's interesting.
So, so the other guys would get a good, better bid. That's interesting.
Well, I gave them a higher rating.
What's it cost you by those trucks?
Mr. Kirk?
Mr. Spillwell, for those properties, what, for those automated routes, how do you handle yard waste outside of the bin?
Yeah.
Do they get a toter? Do they just throw them all together?
Well, we don't, we don't collect yard waste in Dayton, but we do collect bulk. So, you can schedule it as bulk and then there's a separate truck that picks it up. So, and then we also do have a, a lane fill that if residents want to take it to the lane fills opposed to waiting for the collection day, they can take it there free of charge.
Not landfill, compost.
Compost. Lucky that our lane fill, I can't break the habit of saying.
So, we have, now, and I'm, you, we can have bulky waste picked up every Friday if we call and say, but you guys in Dayton, I'm sorry, in Dayton, you only have once a month.
Correct.
So, if we would go to once a month, would, I'm guessing we're going to get, we would get a better rate also?
That's, and, and again, when he talks about...
We'll take a look at this, right?
Yeah, whenever we start talking about those things, whenever we know what you really want and we can, we can adjust the staffing levels to accommodate it and we can, you know, look at how many miles we'll have to drive to, to get those stops. If you're only making that trip once a month as opposed to once a week, obviously, you can save money.
And you guys only recycle once every two.
In Dayton.
In Dayton.
And we do it once a week in Riverside.
So, we have to think about something like that. Would that help you guys at all?
I'll cut your costs down.
And honestly, what we've seen in participation though, is it confuses people. If I put my trash and recycling out every week, I put my trash and recyc, now I gotta remember when to put my recycling out. And it, actually, we've experienced, or it lessens participation. Would it lessen the cost? Yeah. But is it going to help the program to recycle? Not necessarily.
And I agree 100%.
With all due respect, I would disagree with that because we, we've done every other week programs for a while.
For recyclables?
For recyclables.
Okay.
City of Springbrough does it and I don't think that they're any more educated than any other community. They're bright people down there. Don't misunderstand it, especially if they're watching. Very bright people. City of Oregon, it gets back to what Deputy Mayor said and that is, education. You've got to educate and you've got to provide. When we do our cart program and we do every other week program, we put in that cart a brochure. We don't mail it because if people get them in the mail, they throw them away. We put it with a cart in a plastic bag, just like an instruction booklet. And the good thing is men don't have to worry about because we know that we don't read instruction. So, you, you get, you get this brochure and it's got a calendar that has your pickup day for recycling and it's color coded. And it then, you know, and if there's, if your community's divided, one side's, because, I mean, you're going to do weekly recycling. Springbrough, they have every other week recycling, but every week recycling is going on in that community because we split the community in half. And we do one part of the community one week and one part of the community the other week. If for some reason, somebody's got an issue on the off week, we're there in the community, we can run over and get that. But we have not experienced the same thing that my competitor has of it. There's initial, you know, confusion. I'm not going to act like there's, at the beginning of the program, people aren't confused. They are. It's about a three week period.
I can understand.
Because people see their neighbors putting it out and we just implemented Butler Township. Again, you're still going to have issues. People are going to be frustrated because it's a change, anytime you have a change. But as far as confused, getting confused on what days, the education material is there. Most communities... Most communities have it on their website, most, uh, communities that have cable, have it on their cable. So, it's, education is the critical part. You know, and, and again, if, I mean, it's just a cost factor. You can do it weekly, and we're happy to do it weekly, it's just going to cost you more. And you have to make the determination if that matters to you.
To get, keep on all the educational things, we do those for the city of Dayton. I mean, we send an annual calendar out to our customers, and they can go to your website and all that, and figure out their buy.
Wait, wait, wait all the way.
Yeah.
But to answer your question.
Yeah.
Every other week's cheaper. Whatever other week.
We're asking questions, that's giving away each other's secrets.
We're putting five cars, sitting here, and we've turned four cars.
Well, here, here, here's my question, would it, would it be possible, and we may put this into, we put in the contract, would be, if, and it would be an incentive for our, our constituents, is if our recycling rate goes up high enough, and basically are, which hopefully would make our trash volume go down, do, can we get a discount the next, the next year based on, on that information? You know, because then it would be, there would be an incentive for them, for everybody, all the property owners, for the, for them to recycle and, and to put less trash out. I don't know, it was just a thought. Because I know that, I know that Dayton has an incentive, that, you know, they're, they're trying to get their. Up, so that they get down, so that they can lower their taxes, in theory. So, they cost so much for trash.
Talking about the hundred dollars that we do?
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, so, so there's, there's, you know, is, is it possible to put some incentives out there to, to our property owners that if they lower their trash and increase their recycling, that, that it won't happen the first year, because we have to base it on the price, but then the price will go down, which would, everybody's tax cost would go down. It's, it's just a thought, something we could think about.
Variables that could cost money, I don't know.
Well, I mean, it could, it could help us save money to our, to our, to our taxpayers. That's what, that was my thought.
Okay. Ms. Manager, is there anything you would like to add?
Um, we'd be happy to get some more information from all the gentlemen that are here, maybe some sample contracts from some of the other communities, and provide that following you, and then we can discuss it further in the meeting. At least that's what we're, so, hearing.
Yeah, for, how, months, two months?
I think it depends on what we get, get together.
The salesmen for the trash has to be to the county by, I think, the second week of September. So, technically, you have to act on contract.
Okay, so, we're going to have to talk about this next morning.
As soon as we can get it on the work session, I don't need, but it's all fresh in our minds. As soon as we can get it on the work session, calendar research. All right, very good. It's about seven thirty-three, uh, I'd allow everybody to be back here at seven forty-five for the, uh, beginning of the meeting. We are now in recess.